Good evening, welcome to the St. Martin Parish Council regular meeting of June 3rd, 2025 at five o'clock. In the battle for the living room with St. Martin Parish Government and its members, please silence all cell phones, remove all hats. The public can make comments on any item which is required by the St. Martin Parish Council. The agenda to fill our request to speak form will be in the back of the room. Once you're ready, you're to bring it to the Sheriff's Department where we'll give it to them. I would like to call the meeting to an end with a prayer relay by Commissary from Brooklyn.
We, the members of the St. Martin Parish Council, having been chosen to represent the people of the parish, beg of thee, Almighty God, to enlighten our minds so that our work will be just and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land and in so doing fulfilling also thy holy will on earth and in heaven through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Mr. Louie, are we using the page? I have to give you much patience of the time. Consider the love of the church and its saints, what a mission we have done, invisible within everything and justice for all. Rule call, everyone's present?
Appointment of Director, approval of the Parish President's appointment, J.C. Cassiel, as Director of Public Works and his assigned salary, all as required, as section four dash zero one of the Home Rule Charter.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mr. Melisol, second by Mr. Clay.
Regular meeting of May 6th, 2025.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mr. Clay, second by Mr. Corvill. Call for the vote.
Persons to address the council, there is none. Special business, A, council to meet as a board of adjustment to consider granting an exception to Lindsey and Aaron Terryo to build a single-family dwelling on property zone I-1, Light Industrial, located at 1447 Coto Rodeo Highway, Orangeville, District 9.
I need a motion in a second to grant the exception. I have a motion by Mr. Melisol, second by Mr. Corvill. Call for the vote.
Council to meet as a board of adjustment to consider granting an exception to Lance and Casey Terryo to build a single-family dwelling on property zone I-1, Light Industrial, located at 3603 Main Highway Lot Number 22, Brookridge, District 6.
I need a motion in a second to grant the exception. I have a motion by Mr. Melisol, second by Mr. Clay. Call for the vote.
Council to meet as a board of adjustment to consider granting an exception to Kent D. Armator to build a single-family dwelling on property zone W-3, Woodman, Bloodplane Commercial, Light Industrial U.S.A., located at 1207 Bayou Alexander Highway, St. Martinville, District 1.
I need a motion in a second to grant the exception. I have a motion by Mr. Louie, second by Mr. Corvill. Call for the vote.
Council to meet as a board of adjustment to consider granting an exception to Tango Montreux to move a single-family mobile home on property zone W-3, Woodman, Bloodplane Commercial, Light Industrial U.S.A., located at 1203 Bayou Alexander Highway, Lot Number 16, St. Martinville, District 1.
I need a motion in a second to grant the exception. I have a motion by Mr. Louie, second by Mr. Jean-Baptiste. Call for the vote.
Council to meet as a board of adjustment to consider granting an exception to Tyler Montreux to move a single-family mobile home on property zone W-3, Woodman, Bloodplane Commercial, Light Industrial U.S.A., located at 1207 Bayou Alexander Highway, Lot Number 2, St. Martinville, District 1.
I need a motion in a second to accept, to grant the exception. I have a motion by Mr. Louie, second by Mr. Clay. Call for the vote.
Council to meet as a board of adjustment to consider granting an exception to Letitia Taylor Solari to move a single-family mobile home on property zone I-1, Light Industrial, located at 1228 Main Highway, Orangeville, District 9.
I need a motion in a second to grant the exception. I have a motion by Mr. Melisol, second by Mr. Corvill.
Council to meet as a board of adjustment to consider granting an exception to Colleen Rosace to move a single-family mobile home on property zone I-1, Light Industrial, located at 1014 Terrace Highway, Broussard, District 2.
I need a motion in a second to accept, to grant the exception. I have a motion by Mr. Jean-Baptiste, second by Mr. Louie. Call for the vote.
Council to meet as a board of adjustment to consider granting an exception to Ashley Guidry to move a single-family mobile home on property zone I-1, Light Industrial, located at 3345 Main Highway, Brookridge, District 7.
I need a motion in a second to grant the exception. I have a motion by Mrs. Alexander, second by Mr. Clay. Call for the vote.
Ordinance is introduced for public hearing.
I need a motion in a second to vote here. I have a motion by Mr. Melisol, second by Mr. Clay. Call for the vote.
Summary number 14910R, ordinance reducing the extent of the service to rights of St. Martin Parish Government from 100 feet to 25 feet on the northern side of the drainage channel designated as L-34B, where it borders parcel number 06102B, 3419.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item?
Summary number 14920R, ordinance creating the position of Social Media slash special projects manager to add that position to the St. Martin Parish pay schedule and to assign the position to K-Range 10.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item?
Summary number 14930R, ordinance providing for amendment to the expenditures of the year 2025 capital outlay and operating budgets.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? You know, like these?
Yeah, I just wanted to just share a little bit about this. I know we're making some adjustments which ties into the building for the administration side. One of the things, the information that I got after reviewing the information sent by Mr. Durio, is that this funding that we're getting from the state is also timely. It was signed and accepted back in December of '23, and so we have two years to expand the monies with that, so this December is bringing up on the two years. So we need to be mindful of that, that the state, even though they haven't done it in the past, just with a lot of things that's transpired, may request the money back if we have not engaged in the project. And just taking into consideration that we were looking at this expansion also for safety. So whichever way you look at it, we just need to take into consideration there's a strong possibility that we could actually lose a billion dollars, and as well as we've already expended out about 150 in architectural fees. So I'm just asking you to take all of that into consideration, that in order to save a little bit, you might lose a lot. So that's a lie.
Yes, and even to comment on the summary 1493, with that, just to point out that we had the two years, like Councilwoman, Councilwoman was just mentioned, but at the same time, we might not have that opportunity again, for that project to come again, because we're all, I want to say, I want to believe that we're all in tune to the changes that's being made, the cutbacks that's happening, the off-the-tables that's being made that some of whom we never imagined. So we just need to be wise, you know, while we have something in our pockets and we don't have anything, we need to, if we're going to reconsider it, we need to reconsider it fast and move to the program.
Summary number 149...
Ms. Delph.
Just wanted to read the, in that article, 15, termination, section 15,1, this is to elaborate on what this, both Ms. Tangi and Ms. Carla, F.B.N.C. may terminate this agreement for just cause upon the failure of the entity to totally spend, totally spend all funds subject to this agreement within two years from the execution of this agreement. And there again, they mentioned the date of December of '25, which is basically in six months. So if being that, not only has, well, a project was presented, was presented to F.B.N.C., it was agreed upon and accepted by F.B.N.C., totally funded and totally budgeted, and then to pull it at this point in time, after F.B.N.C.'s approval two weeks ago, I think we put this thing in the crosshairs of possible rejection. One other thing that I wanted to bring up is, I would not mention by myself, as Jean-Baptiste just briefly brought it up, was a security issue. This facility here was built 20 years ago. The condition of our society 20 years ago is not the condition that we now live in. 20 years ago, we had open venues and open communication by the public to administration. At this point in time, you see news coverage and even things in the communities which show that those days are past. I'll bring to light instances that occurred here in St. Martin Parish Government over the last two years. There was an injunction filed by Mr. Chester Sears in 2023, an attendant had come to the, to the offices of St. Martin Parish Government threatening individuals for where an injunction had to be placed. It was never finalized due to the fact that the individual was, was removed with no further incident. There was another incident a year ago in which an individual actually came into St. Martin Parish Government facilities and again threatening parish employees. Five weeks ago, the St. Martin Police Department was called, there was an incident which originated in the planning and zoning office and culminated in the parking lot here in front of the, in front of the health center, in which officers needed to be called, in which an individual here, a male attendant employee, had to go into the parking lot, putting himself, unveiling himself to possible harm. Something that had not been addressed to this point, but I'm addressing now, is that in the construction of this new facility, security was inclusive in the planning, to where there's no longer this open entity between employee and the parish attendant. There is plate glass bulletproof. I know it's extreme, but you don't see many venues, public venues anymore, parish venues or government venues without the ability to secure such things such as that. You know, if we take this off of the board now, and from the indications that we're given, we need, we need storage facility, we need that, we need this, we're taking away the very security of parish employees. And as Ms. Tangi just availed to, the possibilities and the ability of us with these monies available to do a structure such as this in the future can be taken off the table. The monies are there, the monies have been budgeted, the project has been approved and by, by Baton Rouge, by F.B.N.C. So moving forward, in event of termination, in the event of this being taken off of the board, please consider the repercussions that go along with decisions such as this.
Ms. Nelson.
Yes, I want to reiterate what my colleague here, Ms. Northese, said, and what I said at the last meeting. If we're going to punt, as I referenced it, and if we're going to readjust and take a look at this, and I've had some constituents reach out to me on this, and brought up some valid points on some of the issues we have with some severe flooding in our parish, and point blank, one of them told me, you're going to build a building, but we have houses that are flooding. We need all the help we can get. I know there's funds allocated, I understand that, but again, as Ms. Northese said, if we're going to readjust or reassess or reevaluate this thing, we need to do it in a very, very quick manner. So I'm appreciative, appreciative of her bringing that up and bringing it out in the open. We need to react quick if we're going to readjust and take a look at this. So just what Mr. Delcum said, the Parish President Delcum said, and what Jean-Baptiste said, there's repercussions all the way around, but in being good stewards, like we all were supposed to be with the constituents and taxpayer money, if we're going to readjust, we need to do it very quickly, and I think we need to do it in a unanimous decision. So that's, thank you for saying that, that was very mindful of your agreement.
Summary number 14940R, ordinance providing for rules and regulations for the Keystone Locks and the movable property that Keystone Locks sit on, located in St. Martinville, St. Martin Parish, Louisiana, and other matters pertaining thereto.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item?
Summary number 14950R, ordinance providing for the lease of one Caterpillar Model D3 12 LGP Dozer.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item?
Yes.
Ms. Delph.
There was, the information given to the council initially had some alteration due to the fact that interest was decreased on each one, summary number 1490R, summary number 149, 14960R, in which there was a decrease of $205.52 on the first and $34.23 on the second one, and I just wanted to make note of that to where the numbers have changed a little bit, however, for record-keeping purposes and so forth, I wanted to be able to bring that to the council attention. It does nothing to the lease or anything along these lines, it's just an addendum, an update of numbers. Ms. Northese.
Parish President, was the decrease on 1495 to what? And on 1495 and 1496, was the term of the lease, is the same?
Everything stays the same. Everything remains the same, other than the lease agreement and the payment is going to go down basically $240 per month, if you add the two together. So it's just a decrease, and it's just to update the numbers, you know, bars to the audience.
Is it annual lease?
They're both five-year.
These are annual leases on a, I think a three-year term, correct me if I'm wrong, five-year term, I'm sorry, five-year term.
Thank you.
I need a motion in a second to close the board here.
Summary number 14960R, ordinance providing for the lease of three Caterpillar Model D5 178P Dozers.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? If not, I need a motion in a second to close the board here. I have a motion by Ms. Northese, second by Mr. Clay. Call for the vote.
Summary number 14910R, ordinance reducing the extent of the service to rights of St. Martin Parish Government from 100 feet to 25 feet on the northern side of the drainage channel designated as L-34B, where it borders parcel number 06102B, 3419.
Need a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mr. Clay, second by Mr. Jean-Baptiste.
Summary number 14920R, ordinance creating the position of Social Media slash special projects manager to add that position to the St. Martin Parish pay schedule and to assign the position to K-Range 10.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mr. Corvill, second by Ms. Northese. Call for the vote.
Summary number 14930R, ordinance providing for an amendment to the expenditures of the year 2025 capital outlay and operating budgets.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion by Ms. Northese, second by the Chair.
Summary number 14940R, ordinance providing for rules and regulations for the Keystone Locks and the movable property that Keystone Locks sit on, located in St. Martinville, St. Martin Parish, Louisiana, and other matters pertaining thereto.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mr. Louie, second by Mr. Jean-Baptiste. Call for the vote.
Summary number 14950R, ordinance providing for the lease of one Caterpillar Model D3 12 LGP Dozer.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mr. Jean-Baptiste, second by Mr. Melisol. Call for the vote.
Summary number 14960R, ordinance providing for the lease of three Caterpillar Model D5 178P Dozers.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mr. Melisol, second by Mr. Jean-Baptiste.
I don't see resolutions. Summary number 0550R, a resolution appointing the tech use of the official government.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mr. Corvill, second by Mr. Melisol.
Summary number 056RS, a resolution appointing Danielle Constance, servant member of the St. Martin Parish Planning Commission.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mrs. Alexander, second by Mr. Corvill. Call for the vote.
Summary number 056RS, a resolution authorizing Parish President Pete Delcum to execute change order number one in the amount of $84,127 decrees for the petroleum portway extension project by Seamen Construction LLC.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mr. Clay, second by Mr. Jean-Baptiste. Call for the vote.
Summary number 057RS, a resolution appointing Elena Connor, St. Martin Parish Sheriff's Office employee, as the Executive Director of the Enhanced Emergency 911 Board of Commissions for St. Martin Parish by recommendation of the St. Martin Parish Sheriff, Becky Bro.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mr. Louie, second by Mrs. Alexander.
Summary number 058RS, a resolution stating the St. Martin Parish Council's approval of the application of Processors LLC number 20200490ITE for an 80% industrial tax exemption and added on taxes for 10 years.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mr. Clay, second by Mr. Jean-Baptiste. Call for the vote.
Summary number 059RS, a resolution authorizing the directing Parish Attorney Lee Durio to prepare a prob and amputative brief on behalf of St. Martin Parish Government for case number 3024-CB-00381-BAJ-EWD in connection with resolution number 24-043RS.
Ms. Jean-Baptiste?
I'm not going to say.
Oh yeah, I'm not saying. I have a motion by Ms. Jean-Baptiste, second by Mr. Melisol before I call for the vote. I have two people who wish to speak on it, or you have a, or do you still want to?
I decline addressing the council, being that there are no other, no other person addressing the issue, I decline addressing it.
Thank you. No, it's good. I decline also, thank you. I know we didn't.
I want, actually, I want to say something. Can I say something?
Yeah.
I have anything?
Yeah. You see, you need one for the vision.
Okay, I'm Monica Fisher, I'm the General Director for Chiapas Basin Keeper. Our mission is to protect Chiapas Basin for future generations. I want to thank you guys so much for your consideration, for your thought processes, for your care for the community, and care for the surrounding Chappaia Basin. Um, the fire protection is a huge issue for everybody, and your parts are, uh, very well heard, and again, I just want to thank you all.
Thank you, the reason you were great, Daniel. Call over the board.
Summary number zero six zero R S, a resolution authorizing Parish President Pete Delcum to execute contract for the Louisiana Department of Health and Hospitals for the Louisiana RIT program related to the provisions of RIT services.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mr. Alexander, second by Mr. John Batiste. Call over the board.
Chair. Before you move forward, the audience for publication. Um, I would like to make a motion to reconsider on summary number fourteen ninety-three, because, uh, even though it doesn't make a difference, but I'm willing to be recording, I will leave the room. So I would like to ask for reconsider.
If it, if it based on mistake, it would be a motion to reconsider, if she wrong, if it's a mistake, if she voted wrong. On the verbal, on everyone who would reconsider, on over, or.
I have a motion in a second to reconsider the board. I have a motion by Mr. Northies, second by Mr. John Batiste.
I'm going to leave as soon as we get this, I'm going to go.
So we vote now to approve that the floor begin?
Correct.
Call over the board.
Give me a second to read back to.
Summary number one four nine three O R, N O R M, it's providing for an amendment to the expenditures of the year twenty twenty-five capital outlay and operating budgets.
I need a motion in a second. I have a motion by the chair, second by Mr. Louie here. Call over the board. Second. We have an intention on this evening, I need a motion in a second to extend the agenda for resolution summary number zero six one R S. I have a motion by Mr. Northies, second by Mr. John Batiste. Call over the board.
Summary number zero six one R S, a resolution rescheduling the July twenty twenty-five regular meeting from Tuesday, July first, twenty twenty-five, to Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty-five, and the July twenty twenty-five Public Works and Administrative Finance Committee meetings from Tuesday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, to Tues-, to Tuesday, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, at their usually scheduled times.
Mr. John Batiste?
Um, did we take a poll to see who would actually be absent, who were looking at it for the Fourth of July? Did we get any, because, oh, we didn't, we didn't get any?
I went on to ask, I have one absentee.
One absentee, okay.
For the regular meeting and one for the committee, okay.
What's that, the whole meeting, from, from the original?
Did we, can we ask the original meeting or not?
It, it's, we get the Fourth of July, yeah, I'll be, I'll be, be to choose the Fourth of July, that would be on the, uh, right.
So, two of us.
So I, I need a motion in a second. I got a boo. I got a motion by Mr. Porter. Second by the chair. Call over the board.
Item eleven, ordinance is introduced for publication. Summary number one four nine seven O R, N O R M, it's authorizing St. Martin Parish Government to abandon South Creek Lane, which was subject to an active dedication in two thousand and seven, which dedication was never accepted by the parish, this said street being depicted on a public survey recorded in Book one four nine one, page six three nine, under entry number four zero eight 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 nine of the conveyance records of St. Martin Parish, Louisiana. Summary number one four nine eight O R, N O R M, it's providing for an amendment to the expenditures of the year twenty twenty-five operating and maintenance budgets for the fire protection plan. Summary number one four nine nine O R, N O R M, it's authorizing St. Martin Parish President Pete Delcum to enter into a lease agreement with Green Team Martin for the property located at one two Old Market Street, St. Martinville, Louisiana, seven oh five eight two, to be used as a temporary office of the St. Martin Parish Tax Assessor, with an option to extend the lease and matters relating thereto.
We have an intention on, I need a motion in a second to extend the agenda to the ordinance summary, number one five zero zero O R. I have a motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Plie. Call over the board.
Summary number one five zero zero O R, N O R M, it's providing for an amendment to the expenditures of the year twenty twenty-five capital outlay budget and Fund Three Thirty, construction slash co-esa bond. Item twelve, informational items not requiring council action.
Any comments from the council? Mr. John Batiste?
I, I just want to share, um, in District Two, um, we did have a big groundbreaking ceremony for U S friends, so we're excited to have them coming into District Two. They are currently in operation in Aguirre Parish, but needed bigger space, um, to be underneath one roof, so we're excited to have them, and with that will come some additional reinforcement opportunities.
Mr. Northies?
I have two things I want to touch on. In, uh, remorse, I want to go back to you comment on flooding, and I want to, I guess, with my thoughts on the flooding. We do have flooding issues, we get a backlash, we are very, um, I'm, I'm not even sure of what our Public Works Department can do more of, or if they're doing the last of. I'm not, I'm not even sure to judge that, but I do know that my first term, um, we did have, you know, the flood, we did have, so we, we had the flood management come in, and it is elevation, um, situation with certain households that would apply, and we did have residents from the parish that applied, and we won the grant. Um, however, it got turned into a city and all that good stuff, and went from one hand to the other. It started off with sellers, and correct me if I'm following, but it started off with one engineering firm, with two engineering firms, it ended up to one engineering firm, then it ended up somewhere else, and, um, I don't know if the ball got dropped, or some type of proof of something happened, but the residents didn't get the attention that they expected. So I did, when the residents started reaching out, because the first nominee, what's it called, is a parish. When the parish only offered, Mr. Cina's only allowed them to come and use the facility to orchestrate and to get the information out, but we didn't, the parish don't have, we have nothing to do with it. So just to even put out there, let the public know. Don't beat us up on it, because we didn't have anything, we didn't control the funds, we don't control applications, we didn't control none of that. And we are aware that it didn't get, it's not, well, I don't understand, it's not funded, but it hasn't been distributed yet. So that part intellectually, there wasn't been hope into them, and it didn't. Um, although that, my concern is, uh, I'm probably directly to the parish president, because that's his, that's his authority. Um, for District Three, not necessarily going to the District, but for District Three, we have a, a, a real concern. I have a real concern with, um, properties. I understand people leave properties, just all that good stuff, but with the authority that we have, the limits that we have, attending to it, I know that it can't get taken care of the next day, I know that we play up into mother nature, but I am aware too that we have four contractors that we can reach out to. It may be if our, if the employees can't get to it, I don't know the, the, the timing of when we can reach out to these contractors, because if our Public Works Department is on open, and they're just that busy, and they're catching up, and all those good things are going on, then places, District, District Three, um, it's still, it's getting worse and worse, so I'm just, I'm reaching out, because the summertime coming. I've been getting so many phone calls about, you know, I know we country and we sugar-catering, and everybody's just on it, but with the rodents, and just all of this going on, and the grass is getting higher than the house, if they can just get some relief as to the front, the lawns of it. Has reached out, have turned their work orders, I'm not saying the work orders are not fulfilled, but the timing is just.
Is this, is, is this in reference to nuisance properties?
No, nuisance.
It's in reference to, uh, ditches and so forth that need to be cut?
Ditches, and yes, ditches that need to be cut. And it's definitely ours, a lot of our, what we, it's not the, um, it's not the state. And if it's the state, I've, I've got the contact number, and that has been very good, and I've got the contact number, I got his cell, and I'm calling, and asking for some help, but, um, just.
Well, what we could do, and as we've done this coming year, uh, and what brought to the Public Works' attention, uh, that there is a need for additional manpower regardless of that. We have purchased one tractor, the lead time, but these were, both of these were initiated in two thousand and twenty-four. We received one tractor about six weeks ago, and we will receive another tractor, I think in August or September of this year. So we have purchased two more tractors, putting two more employees on those tractors to try and minimize those areas, we realize, you know, with Louisiana summers and so forth, we're trying to keep up with it. Uh, that being said, if, uh, projects are, uh, uh, work orders are submitted, uh, I would ask if there are, uh, problems with timing and so forth, or even problems with, uh, following up as to whether it was done or not and so forth. Our Public Works Department keeps a pretty good record of what was filed, when it was filed, and when it was completed. And in the event that there's any questions by any members of the council, or any members of the, of, of the communities, uh, we, we not only welcome, we, we ask that you let us know. You know, sometimes things fall through the cracks, we understand that. However, we go out of our way to make sure that all work orders have been initiated, have been documented, have been completed and closed. If for some reason, uh, that timing is, is being brought up, please bring it to our attention. If some reason it was said that it was completed, and actually it wasn't, again, bring it to our attention. We, we can't fix a problem if we don't know if, if the problem exists. So, thank you for that, and, you know, we're always open, Public Works. Uh, again, Mr. Jason, I would just appoint it as the, the, uh, Public Works Director. He's been on board, I think he's had many positive contacts in, uh, from, from, uh, council members as, as the community. So I feel confident that moving forward, we're going to do the best we can, and, and there again, as things are always subject to change, we've brought in two more tractors, you know, uh, now, people don't realize, the tractor is, I'm not going to say the easier part of the project, it's putting an employee, a full-time employee on that tractor to be able to, to take care of it. But if additional manpower is needed, if additional equipment is needed, let us know, we do the evaluation. Y'all are the boots on the ground, we appreciate your comments, we appreciate your, you know, where you think that the constituents out in the parish need help. And, uh, that being said, if we need to purchase additional or whatever, it will be scrutinized and evaluated, and if a need is, is in, uh, determined, we definitely will take care of it.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, and, I was going to, even going to the nuisance with the, um, four contractors that we have, that we are allowed to use. What's the time to be able to, but not us to reach out to, but part of the nuisance department to reach out to them? If, you know, if it's, it's just, uh, I find it, we're running into, I'm running into properties, you know, it's, it's airs, and all of this and that. Nobody is coming, but if we can get the grass cut, you know, not the dwelling knocked down, but the grass cut, how was our timing to be able to reach out to the contractors, if the parish needs it?
Mr. Dury, are you coming?
So whenever we're dealing with a, a blighted business property, where the owners are deceased, that really causes the problem, because we all have nobody to notice. Uh, so anytime before a contractor stand out specifically grass, uh, certified letter goes out, there's a time for him to comply. Uh, if it's a deceased person, we know there's going to be no notice. Um, so that's when either comes for the council, and a curator ad hoc is appointed, or comes a regular meeting, and we can get a curator ad hoc appointed with the court. Uh, so that's, that's what takes so long on a nuisance property, where there's deceased people. Uh, sometimes we have a deceased person, but we know who's living there, uh, so we can make a jump on out a little quicker. There's this purely abandoned, which I know, so there's one belt there, uh, that we have a problem with, we have that one in the court right now. So that's kind of the holdup, where there's no owner, when the owner's deceased, we just can't give notice.
Okay. Yes, that was a key one, a key one.
And, and just, I mean, your question about the FEMA thing, I remember when it was going on, some of the FEMA stuff, uh, we did get a few residents that did get some of the FEMA, but the, the, the qualify of the FEMA systems or the lifting programs and stuff, you had to, if, if you live in a flood zone or auto flood zone, you had to have flood insurance. All the flood that occurred, the twenty sixteen flood, and the nineteen, where it's a flood, or eighteen, a lot of people didn't have flood insurance, and they qualified. FEMA did go back and change some of the regulations, but a lot of reapply, it's like, well, we did, every many, they just didn't qualify. And it was, it, it was a lot of regulation that you had to go through.
Well, there are a couple of them, there was a few.
Right.
That we see the proof of it. But that's not our, you know, okay, thank you.
Mr. Corvill? I just wanted to say, you started to, we moved through our agenda kind of quickly, not that, at, at all. Um, the first item we voted on, it, it was a, a pretty big deal, uh, Mr. Jason, being our new Public Works Director. I'm glad to see that back here, and we said congratulations on the position, you've been doing a great job, and I know we're going to keep rocking through it going forward, thank you.
Thank you.
Just kind of quickly, man.
Mr. Corvill, still my thumb, but I wanted to congratulate Jason, and to reiterate that I've noticed over the past several weeks, um, how receptive, and it's like, um, I, I've reached out to him probably three times within the past two weeks, and literally on the first, second ring, he's picking up the phone and answering, so I, I think it's a wise decision, and very happy that he's, uh, accepted the position as well, so.
In this, to kind of comment on some of the flood issues we talked about, I think Public Works has a really good job. I've been here for a while, and I can tell you, every year we have tractors that break, tractors that fall behind on the grass, uh, we, uh, we, we stopped spraying some of the roadside issues because of the washouts and the erosion and stuff. So, but we did, all the two new tractors, one came in, we got one more company. The biggest problem with that, I, I don't think it's directed toward Public Works with the drainage issues, some of the drain, I think it's not. Can you just kind of come in on something that's very interesting you talked about? I think Public Works has a really good job. I've been here for a while and I can tell you, every year we have tactics that break, tactics that break before behind on the grass, uh, we, uh, we, we stopped spraying some of the roadside issues because of the washouts and the erosion and stuff. So, but we did, all the two new tractors went in there, we got one more company. The biggest problem with that, I, I don't think it directed to Public Works with the drainage issues, some of the drain, I think it's funny. I think we do have enough money and I can tell you, I was in by the rules and I, uh, I had a conversation with our examiner, there's not going to be a lot of money coming down. Uh, I, I don't see it, uh, the way it's looking right now, I also don't think we're going to see, we have about seven million dollars of money that's not allocated that will be known for federal state money, federal money we've been waiting on since twenty eighteen that they come in, the, till they can now seven hundred seventy six thousand dollars, I don't think this is any money. Uh, I'm pretty sure everything is getting funding, ready money for sheriff to deal, maybe next year. Uh, a lot of the work chest money that they're talking about, we're going to be able to open up and bring up the same because of the madness feeling and them not being able to go into different pools of money and, and money's just not there this year. So the problem is funding, it's just, it's a funding source. And I think, you know, we do the best we can, is, I've been here for ten years, I can tell you, we've always done the most, and we, we operate a forty million dollar budget that has, she have had to be, they have the size of us, we just spent an hour that they have, we can't surprise it, and then we're going to have a billion dollar budget, it's a big difference. So, I, I think we can see a, a, a big gap in funding and we don't see what's going on in Washington and, uh, it looks like the Trump administration look at a whole theme right now, so I don't think we're going to see a lot of funding coming in anytime soon. Just mark those.
Mr. Norrisis?
Just breathe. That's exactly, then that's what I feel, that's what I feel we need to tell the public. So I'm not going to listen hour, come back in their conversation with us and worries, but that's what we need to tell the public, just where we at, what we can do, what we have and what we doing. Because, you know, it, it's, I've got the thing appointed and it's good, but so many times you're like, it's not the parish, it's not the parish, we don't have it. And it definitely is funding, it's not public, it's not public, it's funding. So, definitely, but I do, I, I, I tell everybody, we just don't want to let out, letting the public know and I'll, we just appoint a session, session is again, so they can get it out. Thank you.
Danielle? Good? Danielle's, uh, go for adjournment, need a motion in a second to adjourn. I have a motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Louier. Call for a vote. Any adjournment?